Bismarck. In Germany, in France, approaching their low levels. Like Japan, Japan, it's like, their population is going to flatten. I have children waiting to get to the forefront of reoccupying. Whole different society out there. Oh, man, I gotta get a haircut, too. I almost need a scrunchie. Wow. I could have a small ponytail.
You got thirty seconds, twenty seconds.
One minute.
Okay, we can make it all up, because I don't have a clue. I mean, honestly, I couldn't tell you. Yeah, and honestly, I think ninety percent of them.
First round out.
You have no idea what my mind is just because I live in.
American, Texas?
Yes.
So I got the Texas, because I'm a Texan.
Okay.
Born and raised.
Ladies and gentlemen, a few will find a place to remain quads. We will open the meeting of the Central Texas College District Board of Trustees for this. Mark Victoria. And agenda will have an indication, a pledge of allegiance to the National Enam, and the Texas pledge. So if you will stand with me, and, Lord God, we're thankful, the opportunity we have to come together to do the business of this college. We ask for your guidance in making sure that we know that we're doing what is intended for the state of Texas. And this college, and its documentation, instrumentation. We thank you for the opportunity we have to serve, we thank thee for the staff and faculty that are part of this institution. And the dedication and quality they give to the students who come here to expand their knowledge, expand their opportunities for employment in this world. That's a special blessing on all those who could not be here today. And we ask you to be with us and guide us and direct us the way you want us to go when we depart. We ask these things of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you all for standing up for your birthright. I stand with Jim.
Okay. We have a forum present, I believe, Mr. Armstrong is attended by media, is that correct, Don, you're out there? Don't hear Don. Did he call in?
He hasn't called in.
Okay, then we're, still have a forum present, and this meeting is being recorded. If you have any need to get a hold of it, there is a website that you can get through the college website to find out the recording of this meeting, and any other meetings that we've had. Item number two is consider the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting with the Board of Trustees that was held on January the twenty-sixth, two thousand and one. It's been provided for you in your read ahead. Have any comments or questions or corrections?
Move.
A motion been made and seconded to approve as published. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Item three is consider the minutes of the special meeting of the Board of Trustees held on February the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Again, a copy of those minutes have been provided in your read ahead, whether any corrections or objections to that particular document. Seeing none, I'll take a motion. A motion been made and seconded to approve. The minutes is published. All those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
The motion now carries. Item number four is chairman's update. It's an opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for discussion, or to address topics of interest with permission. Presentation limited to three minutes. Is there anyone present would like to discuss something for the board? Seeing none? And I'm glad that we're up to the point with the COVID crisis that everybody can now get their shots. I'm sure most of you already have them. If you haven't, it's now open in the state of Texas, and you're sixteen years or older, you can get a shot. And incidentally, they're free. And, yeah, some people say they hurt, but they really don't. Just mind over matter. Just stick your arm out there, and they'll put it in, and you walk away. No big deal. Next item is number four, I mean, number five, and that's the chancellor's report.
Can we get extra? If they got extra?
Yeah, you can get more than one if you want.
Okay. First item, Dr. Garrett, there you are, looking on the wrong side of the room.
Good afternoon. I'd like to ask Dr. Welsh to please stand up. Dr. Welsh was selected to participate in the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board's Rule Making Committee to address a portion of the famous Senate Bill Twenty-five from the eighty-sixth legislature. This required institutions to publish in their catalog and on their online website, as well as provide a report to the coordinating board of a recommended sequence of at least one academic program, which included all the courses, the academic courses, and the required recommended order for the courses to be taken. Dr. Welsh and a team from across the state worked to develop, develop the rules that will go into the Texas Administrative Code, to make sure that all the institutions follow these rules, and then, and do it correctly. This, what they developed is going to go before public comment, and then they have to get back together again, and weed through all those concerns of public comments, and then devise the final set of rules that will go into the Texas Administrative Code. So we're very, very proud that Dr. Welsh was selected to participate in this and bring her experience and knowledge to serve the state of Texas and all of our institutions. So thank you, Dr. Welsh.
I'd just like to add that, you know, this is part of my effort to get us involved in state, city, national legislation, and the kinds of things we're doing, especially around the colleges. So considering that there are a couple hundred schools in the state of Texas, it's quite an honor and a privilege that she was selected. Of course, I pushed and Dr. Garrett pushed, so that might have helped. But, yeah, thank you, Dr. Welsh. Your expertise and long years of service will prove very valuable to them.
Definitely. Okay.
Okay, you're.
The next one.
SAC COC Audit Committee.
Yes, I am excited and very, very pleased to announce that our chancellor was selected to participate in the Financial Audit Committee for SAC COC. Just recently, he was, what, less than, maybe a little over a year ago, he was appointed to the board. Then he was appointed to the Executive Board, and represented the whole state of Texas on the Executive Board. Now, because of his expertise, his knowledge, his enthusiasm, and his dedication, he was asked to serve as one of three on this Financial Audit Committee. So we're, CTC is so well representative at the state and the regional level, so, so thank you, Chancellor.
I think I was the only one that said no, or didn't say no. I got selected, everybody else dropped out.
No, it was, it was well deserved and, and well needed, much, much needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. Ms. Chavez, College for Kids Summer Programs.
We're coming in threes.
Yeah, right, banging up.
No, my, my part is really to turn it over to the ladies here. I just wanted to let you know that I think you met Mr. Hassan Dawson. He's the dean for Adult and Workforce Education. Just came on board yesterday, and he is the person that Teresa is reporting to. So Teresa, I'm turning it over to you.
Good afternoon. Sarah, last fall, she is the coordinator for Community Enrichment Programs in the Department of Continuing Education, and she applied for a couple of grants, and I'm happy to announce that we received a Governor's Merit Award Grant, and a, it's more of a contract for STEM for kids with disabilities. And I'm going to have her briefly explain a little bit more about the two grants that she's going to be conducting this summer.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you all for listening to me and being able to express my joy with receiving these grants, which I'm super excited about. So like Teresa mentioned, we had the opportunity to apply for two different grants, one, one grant and one contract. They are, both programs aim to inspire Texas youth and help them pursue careers in STEM, so science, technology, engineering, and math-related fields. And so these are welcome additions to our already successful College for Kids program that we're running this summer. So first, I want to tell you about the Governor's Summer Merit Program. This grant was a total of twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. And with that, we'll be able to offer students ages fourteen to twenty-one a scholarship to attend a camp that will prepare them for the future high-skill, high-demand jobs in STEM-related fields. So in the five-day camp, which we have titled the Lego Mindstorms Robotics and Coding Camp, we'll have two different STEM instructors. They're both from KISD. They'll be coming in to teach students how to use some Lego Mindstorms robotics kits to strengthen their design, engineering, and coding skills by solving complex, real-world, real-world problems of computer-controlled machines. So basically, they're going to be able to build robots. So with computer-integrated manufacturing, students will learn how to build the industrial robots and control production processes, and use real-life human manufacturing examples to perform specific tasks. So guest speakers will talk to students in this class about how they use programming and robotics in their companies and careers, and students will learn what skills they need to emerge as technological leaders in the industry. The second program that we applied for is with the Texas Workforce Commission Vocational Rehab Division. And so we just, we established an interagency contract to provide STEM camp designed for students with disabilities ages fourteen to twenty-two. And so these students will be able to also emerge themselves in the STEM-related career areas. This camp will be taught by Michael McDonald, who has a Master of Science in Aerospace, and the students will be learning how to design a static model of a airplane. So that's really, really super cool, really, really looking forward to it. Each module is crafted and designed to provide the essential mental tools needed to understand the STEM task, engage peers, and research with discussion, and formulate a presentation to give to the instructor and other students on the last day of class. And the last day of class is going to be very exciting, because the instructor is constructing a wind tunnel for the students to be able to test out their airplanes. So that'll be really cool. And so we're really excited to offer these two scholarships for students this summer, and because of these TWC programs, students who may not have previously been able to enroll in our courses due to financial restrictions will now have the opportunity to do so. So both camps will encourage students to think about enrolling in CTC's STEM program, which is really awesome. So does anybody have any questions for me? Yes, ma'am.
How will the students be selected?
It'll be through a scholarship application that we'll design.
And then you'll put together a committee, I'm assuming, that would review those applications and make a selection?
That's correct, yes, yes. Any other questions?
I guess there were, how, how many of you applied for this grant? Do we know?
Um, I'm not sure off the top of my head. It's, it's for the whole state of Texas. I'm not sure how many are awarded.
Well, just, just being selected to do that, all the colleges in Texas again, is well done. And this goes to part of what we're trying to do here locally for the community, but also out in our service area. We have other grants and things, we, but we try to share with you, the board, some of the things we're doing so that you have a feel for what we are doing beyond just our classroom education.
I have one other question. I wanted to ask you, how is the announcement or the advertisement that the scholarship is available? How is that being done?
How is it being done? So we're going to make the application, and then we're going to send it out to KISD. There's some different awareness groups that we can send it to. We put it in our course schedule, saying that a scholarship application will be available, so students can apply that way, and some other here-and-there little nonprofit groups around the area that we think the, the students would, we would get some students from there.
Barbara, does this go on our social media and our website and all that? Yeah, okay. So it'll be included in there?
Yes.
Most likely Bruce will put out a press release, so.
Yeah.
Now, also, is that going to go to CCISK also?
Yes, all local school districts. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Photograph, photographs, Freddie, we got anything to show? Oh, there she is. Okay. All right. Start with Dr. Garrett.
Me again. We continue to support our students through virtual events, and CTC Live did these in March. And in February, we did a session from Veteran Services, Financial Aid, and a information session to help students know what to do and how to get into, to college. Additionally, we have some more coming up. On April thirteenth, we're doing another Financial Aid one. April fifteenth, another Veteran Services one, and then April fifteenth, a virtual information session in the evening, at six-thirty in the evening. These are all recorded, and they're out there on our page. You can, students can go back and review them at any time. But we like to have them live, and we like to promote them as much as we can so that students have an opportunity to learn what they need to know to be successful or to get into, into Central Texas College.
Keeps us connected with them, especially now. I know that Dr. Garrett and her team reach out to students to get indications of what they need to hear and what they like to hear, and so they put these together, and they'll stay out there. Ms. Merle will push them out through social media, and we'll, we'll have them out there, so.
And interesting, yesterday, we had a little bit different. We had the midday music break with the CTC Choir yesterday afternoon. Streamed live also. But, and also, just one little thing, this is Women's History Month, and we've had three live events so far, and we have two more coming up. March twenty-ninth, at noon, Tammy Samaripa will be doing Women in Allied Health. And then on March thirtieth, Tanika Patrick will be doing Women in Behavioral Health. So there's, those are events that will help students learn about programs and what they might want to do in their career.
Okay, next, Barbara?
And then, okay, I am going to read this, because Dean Lori Purser wrote an amazing write-up about, about this slide. "In February, the Hobby Memorial Library celebrated Black History Month by inviting community members to share their life stories. Tanika Driver-Moultrie, Lavina Sabri, and Floyd Burke were three of the eight speakers who shared their stories in CTC Facebook livestreams. The 2021 Black History Month theme, which is the Black Family Representation, Identity, and Diversity, offered CTC a glimpse into real lives in our community. Ms. Driver-Moultrie, the president of the Colleen NAACP, spoke about how throughout her life, others told her she couldn't achieve. She decided not to let the opinions of others rule her life, and decided to be her own advocate in achievement. Her story was believing in yourself. Ms. Sabri shared her struggle of being attacked while in the military, and how that made her determined to overcome adversity. She went on to start her own business and volunteers for numerous organizations in our community to give back. The mother of six kids shared her parenting strategies and focused on balancing family and work. And Mr. Burke shared his early life story. Growing up in a segregated community of Louisiana, he talked about the struggles his father faced just to be allowed to vote in the United States presidential election. His story covered his college years and his work in education administration. Despite living during a time when he was told he did not have, could not have basic rights, he spread joy and hope to our viewers. Through the series of speakers, viewers were given stories of hope, struggle, and a willingness to never give up, no matter what the obstacle. The videos already have over sixteen hundred views, and we want to thank our speakers for their courage to be vulnerable, modeling strength, and their willingness to share in our students' growth. This was a great way of, of celebrating Black History Month the best we could, being all virtual. But it really gave an opportunity for many more people to experience the topics and these speakers by us having it online."
Yeah, this is a continuation of what, you know, Horse Grace brought to us, so, I guess, fifteen, twenty years ago. And we have a collection in the library, and we have a dedicated space there, and I think some of you may have attended one of the, one of the celebrations there. So we'll continue to do that. I've, I've asked, well, once we get through this COVID and we get our buildings back in shape, I had asked that we take a look at moving that from the upstairs to the downstairs to an area down there that used to be the old Law Library. It's a little bit bigger room, and what it, what it was converted to was continuing education at nighttime. So it's a bigger space, and we may be able to do some other things and, and put a lot of the collections down there, so.
Thank you.
Dr. Edie.
Good afternoon again. What you see here is a picture of one of our graduates from our ninth cohort SAP. This program is offered on Fort Hood and has been offered for several years. We had twenty-two graduates, and you can see one of them who was in our virtual graduation ceremony. Students still have virtual interviews. This program is designed to lead them directly from the military into employment, and we had, those students had interviews with some Fortune 500 companies. And in the past, they also received employment with the Department of Navy Logistics, Universal Holding, Logistic Holding, and Northrop Grumman, just to name a few. And so the next cohort is already in session, so Cohort Ten is going on now, and we currently have nineteen students in that.
Yeah, we usually have, what, about twenty, average, I guess?
Somewhere around twenty students.
We've had a couple hundred students go through that program and get employed, so the military, Fort Hood really likes it. It's part of that transition program, along with the Ford Program and, and Shifting Gears and all those other things. But, yeah, it's, it's a great segue into industry, so.
It absolutely is. All right, next picture is our Sweet Treat Bakery. What you see here are some students preparing pastries, and this is part of the Advanced Pastry Shop class that is taught by Chef Lupita. And you, student, staff, anyone coming to campus can purchase these baked items. The bakery is open here on campus in the Student Center at eight-thirty to ten-thirty Tuesdays and Thursdays. So not only have these students provided sweet treats for folks coming on campus, they also have catered to a few places. They have ordered, for example, families readiness groups and City of Colleen have ordered several items from our bakery. So they came and picked them up, and they enjoyed them. And also, we are combining some of these baked goods with our gardeine class. So when it comes to meats, bacon, and sausage, anything, I guess you could put in a colati, that also ties over into the other class.
You have to get there early, though. Mr. Towers is the first one in line. So if you want some, some of those baked goods, you got to get here about eight, seven-thirty or eight.
So on that note, too, I know we don't have a slide about that, but our Patio Cafe just started. So it's carryout. You cannot dine in, but it is carryout, and the last meal was Indian. And so when I bought this, I thought it, I was thinking really spicy, but it really was not spicy. It was very, very good, very excellent.
Okay.
All right, and CTC recently announced that the Industrial Diesel Program that we have ranked number five in Texas, and also ranked number nineteenth in the U.S. And I think big part of that is leadership, that our program manager, they has Mr. Kirchner, he is managing this program, and he is working with our students. And we had quite a bit of competition. We actually moved up in the ranks. We were fifth place last year, moved then to fourth place, and we hope to continue that way. All right, and this one here is a really neat story. We have a student who is an early college high school senior who received an award. Her name is Jenny Steinauer. She received, and I have to read this, the 2021 Central Texas Affiliate of the National Center for Women and Information Technology Award for Aspirations in Computing. She received this award. She was taking courses here, dual-credit classes at CTC, many of them under Dr. Welsh. And he mentored her. Students had to write papers, they had to participate in competitions, they had to do hackathons, and all sorts of things to show their skills and what they have learned in our programs. So the student has a well-deserved award, and also thank you to Mr. Joe Welsh, who mentored the student, who also wrote a nice letter of recommendation, and so we're very proud of this early college high schooler.
If any of you keep in mind, we have scholarships through the foundation this year. Due to the pandemic, the school districts have been, you know, half, half-full, I guess is what you say. Anyway, our, normally, we get seven or eight hundred applications for scholarships, and this year, we've only had about three hundred. So keep that in mind if you know of a young person who needs, in need of a scholarship. I mention that because we have five full-ride scholarships, the four-year scholarship, General Shoemakers, and it's worth, they're worth twenty-six thousand dollars apiece. So if you consider that you would come here, first year for five thousand, second year for five, and A&amp;M for eight, twice, and that's your twenty-six thousand. It will pay for books and tuition, and if we have to do room and board, you know, there's those possibilities. So right now, I think they had two applicants for those five slots, and I've worked, we're working with Colonel Tom Clady over at the RTC detachment. And we're working with, well, Todd Fox, he called me. He's got a young, a person who's interested. They have to be a graduate of Shoemaker High School. That, that's the only thing, and they have to carry a C average, and they have to agree to take fifteen hours each semester with us in A&amp;M, so. But it'll, it'll get them through, and if they're in RTC, it'll get them commissioned in four years. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sir, that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. Item six is discuss and consider approval of the January twenty-twenty-one and the February twenty-twenty-one enter financial statement and investment reports. Mr. Liberty?
You all should have a copy of these that you received in your read-ahead packets, as we did in December. I'm only going to speak to the February statements. If you'll remember, our last meeting was canceled due to the storm. That's when we would have presented the, the January statements, but at this point, those are OBE, so we'll go ahead and talk about the February numbers. If you look at those, you'll see that we are trending very well with last fiscal year, which is really a big surprise. I would tell you, most other institutions, as well as businesses around the world, aren't doing that well due to the pandemic. And if you, if you go to page two of this report, you'll see where it all takes place. If you look at the top section, total revenue, we're down six million dollars. But what that means is, we've cut our expenditures by greater than we've reduced our revenue. Because the bottom line last year, we were eight hundred thousand dollars bottom line through February. Now we're looking at seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that's with a loss of, of revenue of over six million dollars. So all the items. So all the items that we put in place based upon the, the, the guidance from the chancellor and the fiscal provisions that we locked everybody down with, we've been able to accomplish all these things that Dr. Adie showed, as well as Dr. Garrett talked about, and we've still been able to do it by cutting costs extremely. Unfortunately, things, while the country's starting to get better, things aren't looking better for our end yet. Spring revenue enrollments were down seventeen percent compared to a year ago, and our deferred revenue number, which is kind of a, a forecast of what's out there in front of you, it's, it's revenue that we've received, but the courses haven't actually started or completed yet. It's down almost two million dollars from last year to this year. So I don't believe that we're going to see the bottom line tick up much at all, if any, through the rest of the year, and those of you who have been around for a long time will know that normally the summer, the numbers get worse because we continue to have the same staff and expenses, we just don't have as many students in the summer. So we will be doing well to keep the bottom line anywhere close to intact as it is. And then our best friend that we like to talk about, and I bring it up at every meeting, our Gatsby friends, we don't know how those will yet affect us. Projections that I've seen, you know, hopefully, they will not be significant to the bottom line, so we should be fairly good in that, in that light. The one number that you see has gone up a little bit, and, and you wonder why it happens, and it's our federal revenue, but as a reminder, that's the CARES Act funds that we've received and already spent, and we shared some at the workshop that we, we do have additional dollars that were approved and more dollars coming, and the federal government has finally decided that we can start using some of those dollars for lost revenue, which is great. I put some information together and I asked Doug to take a look at it to see if he thought what I was doing made sense, because they've kind of given us a pretty blank canvas to paint on, and as Mr. Beebe knows, I can kind of be like Picasso if you're going to give me an open canvas. I can make it look, look however it needs to, to help the college. So I think we're going to receive quite a few dollars of that CARES funds that we're going to be able to use to offset expenditures. You know, it, it doesn't help your bottom line, but it goes into the bank, and then we can go ahead and spend those dollars without having to deplete current cash reserves, so that is good news, if anything. So if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Liberty. I'll consider a motion.
Second.
A motion been made to approve and is seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the January 2021 and February 2021 enter financial statement and investment reports, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is a discuss and consider approval of purchase of IBM Flash System 7200 to include three years of maintenance and support from Congrove One Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Mr. Gallis.
Good afternoon. Today, on behalf of the CTC administration, I would like to recommend the purchase of a new enterprise storage system specifically, as General Weaver just stated, an IBM Flash System 7200. We would make that purchase for the reasons we talked about in last week's workshop. This is a budgeted item. It would be bought via one of our longtime vendors, Converge One, through the state DIR contract for this equipment, and the price, again, would be two hundred and fifty-nine K. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer.
So move.
Second. A motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chancellor.
Thank you, sir.
Our next item is to number eight. Can you guys consider approval of the PBK Architects Incorporated to continue the architectural engineering services on the addition of the new elevator within the Enrollment Services Building for an estimated amount of twenty-three thousand dollars. Mr. Armson?
Thank you. Good afternoon. If you remember, prior to the pandemic, the board had approved the, some architectural and engineering services work for the Enrollment Center, as well as Morton Hall, but because of the uncertainties of the pandemic, the project was placed on hold, but the college would like to continue the design work within the Enrollment Center. We would issue the RFP for construction services after September one, the new fiscal year, when we have the budgeted capital dollars. The total project costs are estimated at about four hundred and eight thousand dollars, and then as General Weaver stated, the administration recommends approval of PBK to continue the architectural engineering services for this, this project.
Any question, Mr. Armson? I'll entertain a motion. Motion been made.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approval of using the PBK to do the elevator in Enrollment Services Building in the amount of twenty-three thousand dollars? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is discuss and consider approval to execute the second option period of the contract with PBK Architects Incorporated for the period of April the first, 2021 through March the thirty-first, 2022, in amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Mr. Armson?
Yes, so as you stated, the college does need to exercise the second option period of the PBK contract. We've got a number of projects moving forward and, and want to make sure that the board is comfortable continuing with PBK. So the administration recommends exercise the second option period of the PBK contract.
Any questions, Mr. Armson?
So move.
Motion been made. There are a second.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number ten is discuss and consider approval of PBK Architects Incorporated to complete architectural engineering-related services for the Department of Justice American Disability Act three-year compliance project in amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Armson?
Yes, as we discussed at the workshop, that the college needs to address a number of the ADA accessibility issues throughout campus. We would be engaging PBK for some architectural and engineering assistance and other related services. The, the total cost of the project at this point is a little difficult to determine, but based upon the nature of the project and discussions I've had with Cliff Wittingstall with PBK, who's one of their principals, PBK would be paid on an hourly basis, and it would not exceed the three hundred thousand dollars per year over the, the life of the project. So with that, the administration recommends approval of PBK for architectural engineering services related to this accessibility project.
Any questions, Mr. Armson?
I have a question. You said that's three hundred for this fiscal year?
The, the work is estimated, because it's over three years, three hundred thousand dollars per year, so from the start of the project, estimated three hundred thousand dollars.
But you're gonna, but you're gonna start it this fiscal year?
Yes.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eleven is discuss and consider the approval of the impact fire, Jules Flooring, Shaw Contract Floors, Heights Lumber, Brant Texas Air Systems, RK Bass Specialty Restoration and Bellefour Restoration for all the storm damage repairs. Mr. Armson?
So as we, again, discussed at the board workshop, the college was impacted by the recent winter storms that struck Texas. The college is currently taking actions to address the damaged areas throughout campus, and certainly we need to work with multiple vendors to obtain quotes to begin making the repairs. The, the pricing for each listed vendor is still being evaluated. We're still receiving proposals that we are working with the insurance carrier on. The cost per vendor will exceed fifty thousand dollars, and each of the companies listed below are approved purchasing cooperative vendors, or they have a signed contract with Central Texas College. The exception to that is specialty restoration, which we use for just the emergency remediation directly after the storm. So with that, the, the CTC administration recommends approval of each of the listed vendors for the storm damage repairs.
A discussion with Mr. Liberty, some of the funds that are available to us in some of this restoration, if the insurance doesn't cover it, we've got some cash that's coming to us in this, and also discuss with him that our vegetation and plants and bushes and these kind of things, if there was any damage, that is also covered with our insurance rider. So we can replace most of the things, except if there's some oak trees that have died, we can't get a brand-new oak tree. We have to start from pretty, pretty small stems, so that will take place as soon as we can identify everything that we need to be doing, so that, that's also part of this project.
Right, I'll, I'll mention that, that we've had conversations, and as far as I know, the insurance company has released a two-million-dollar check. We worked with Bob and his team. I think they're going to be forwarding it directly to the college, and it should be here probably any day now. In regards to the plants, we've had an individual that was assigned to us by the insurance carrier, and then he has been walking around campus, looking at all of the shrubbery, all of the plants, et cetera, working with William Dugger on the extent of the damage to all the landscaping and, and plants.
I'll consider a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the restoration for the support of our damage here. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twelve is discuss and consider approval of the Board document number four-four-one, cancellation of trustee's regular election. Mr. Annapolis?
As you know, we had no competition with our two candidates, Mr. Beebe and Ms. Coley, for reelection to the Board of Trustees, so we will put a cancellation order in effect as, as the board approves to both races unopposed, so, and the trustees, those two trustees will be sworn in at the May meeting, annual meeting. So I need a motion to move forward.
I entertain a motion. Is there some questions that need to be answered?
How much does an election usually cost us?
I knew you were gonna ask me that, Charles. Bob was about fourteen.
One, one like this would cost in excess of ten thousand dollars.
I think it was fourteen thousand.
It could be up at twenty-six thousand. It depends on, you know, if you can cooperate with other people in your polling places and, you know, if you had to do it all by yourself, it, it could be.
Right.
What General Weaver alluded to is we try to marry up when someone else is having one, so we don't have to hire many judges and rent buses and stuff.
I think the, the last time I asked Debbie, she was, it was right at fourteen thousand. And that's really good compared to what it could have been. Well, Bob's, Bob's correct. If we had to run it by ourselves, it, it costs probably twenty, thirty thousand dollars easily.
Anybody want to make a motion?
So move.
Motion been made and seconded to cancel the trustee regular election. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I wouldn't accuse Ms. Coley of anything inappropriate, but I wonder if there was a conflict of interest for her to make that motion. No, that's, congratulations, Ms. Coley.
Or whatever.
As long as you're a trustee in elected position, I believe you can make motions up to the point where you're no longer trustee. And I believe you will be in that position until May. I think we can square people after the elections are approved in May, is that right?
I was just breaking, breaking.
I think it's May that, that your term is up, so we'll re-swear you in in May, so.
Thank you.
You're in good shape. Thank you, Mr. Towers, for your point. Number, item thirteen is discuss and consider approval of Dr. Jerry Herrick, Department Chair of Metris. Dr. Herrick's been recommended for accordance with established college policy number five-six-zero as a means of appointment and specified policy. Dr. Adie?
Yes, I bring to you a regret, a request to grant a merit status to Dr. Jerry Herrick. He retired in August 2019, and he served, he had Central Texas College for over thirty-five years, and he was faculty and also Department Chair of Social Science, Social and Behavioral Science Department.
Any questions, Dr. Adie?
I'd just like to make a comment. I've had an opportunity to work, work with Jerry over the years, long before he became a department chair, and I have tremendous respect for him and his ability to get his job done, so it's an honor to address this today.
Thank you for sharing that.
I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item fourteen is recommend any topics for upcoming agenda items or announcements by board members. Mr. Roger?
I've got a lot of feedback from my family and others about the status of the planetarium. Evidently, we have a media source who was advertising that we were having a meeting last Friday to determine the future of the building. I don't think any of us were invited to it, and I'm not exactly sure. I can't figure out who it was who keeps running the news article, but I'm sure that we'll build a work on that and see if we can find out who it is so we can improve their information. Not of, not only have I heard from family members, I've heard from a number of people in the community encouraging me to be in favor of continuing the building and the planetarium, which is completely outside what I have heard internally.
Heard nothing about it. As far as I'm concerned, we're continuing with it. I don't know where they're getting their information, but it's not from any of us. Charles, if you would.
We had money coming from the insurance company and we're working actively, and it will soon be back online. It may have caused some extensive damage to the facilities, but not the planetarium itself, so.
Right, right, and if you, they're welcome to call me, you can, you can certainly refer them to me. I'd be happy to discuss it with them. First I've heard about.
We need to put a newspaper article out saying that we're looking forward to showing shows again pretty soon.
Ted, do you have a comment?
Quick update. I mean, Mr. Armson's team has, has pretty much, they've done the mediation piece of it, and our folks now have been able to get the tenant, and we've been cleaning up and getting everything spaced appropriately. And so the tenth was the deadline of April that we're looking to hit so that we can get the planetarium back open. Even before that, we were running shows, we have been having some good attendance at the shows, and now with the criteria from COVID lifting, we're also evaluating before we go to more shows. So the planetarium is open, and as soon as we get it clean and ready to go, it'll probably be back open.
And they, they report to Ted Gonzales, so he would know. I, that's first I've heard of anything. I might have heard that rumor. I hear lots of rumors, but nothing like that.
Mr. Towers?
We're good.
Any inclination when we're going to start meeting back in the, the boardroom?
Uh, no, not yet. Probably, we, we're gonna, Dr. Carter and I are gonna meet Friday to discuss how we reopen the campus, if you will, so that will include all of that. We're trying to get back into the classrooms. Of course, a lot of that's going to depend on how quickly we can get all those classrooms and things in order. Mr. Harmson's working diligently to, to do that, and then following all these protocols. So if I had to guess, you know, I mean, I could guess, September is when we're gonna bring classes back, so prior to that, I'm sure we can have our board meetings in there, but we'll, we'll see how, how it goes and how y'all, how comfortable you feel. COVID is still here, so it hasn't gone away just because everybody's gotten their shots and, but we're, we're doing very well. We had zero cases this past week, so we're zeroed out across our entire campus, and that's across the United States, Europe, everywhere. I know none of our students, faculty, or staff have reported a case of COVID, so, you know, that's, that's pretty well said based upon what we're following in these protocols, and we want to continue that. So unless you all are uncomfortable meeting in here, I, I, my recommendation is we meet here for a little while longer until we can feel comfortable to get back in there. I think everything's being addressed here, is, is there something we're missing, Mr. Pierce?
I'll just try to get back to normal.
Yeah, well, I think we all are, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should look at it too, from the standpoint of trying to get back online.
Right, right. Well, we, we.
A lot of people take their odds from what the leadership does.
Yeah.
If the leadership is not afraid to walk in front of a machine gun, then the troops will follow you, so, you know. If everybody hasn't got their shot yet, then I'd say shame on you. So we need to, we need to step up and, and show a little leadership and a little policy here, maybe we ought to look for first of June to start the.
We'll, we'll look at it, you know.
You know, give us a couple of months to look at the big picture, but we ought not to wait till September, that's, that's saying we're, we're just not looking, looking out for what we're supposed to be doing.
I said September because that's the date we're looking at classes, we're, we're, you know, KISD, unless they can get funding from the federal government or the state to continue what they're doing, they're gonna go back to the classroom, and copper scovas too. So at that point, we've got to go back to the classroom, because as you know, early college high schools over here, and those kids take those college classes, and they can't be going to a Thursday class and not a Tuesday class, you know, that kind of thing, so they, we're gonna have to get back into it, but we're gonna discuss all this, and then we'll share it with the deputies, we'll get together and come up with our plan to reopen more and more. I know that, I saw a schedule that Dr. Garrett pulled together, and Dr. Adie presented, there were, we have over two hundred face-to-face classes coming in September, and we have around two hundred classes that are, are SVL, and we have about two hundred that are online, so we're gonna try to move more to the face-to-face, and that, Dr. Adie and Dr. Garrett are working on that. You know, I was over at Scott and White the other day, and I, I talked about COVID and, and the inoculations, and I was informed that half the people over there haven't had their inoculations, and I inquired as to why, and they said, they chose not to. And the reason they chose not to is they were afraid of the after effects of the shots. And I said, well, I can tell you what the after effects are, if you don't get the shots and you get sick, you know, that's not good. So even our healthcare workers are refusing to get inoculated, I don't, I don't even understand that. You know, at some point, it might be end up like we did with polio back in, in the fifties, and well, it'll be a mandatory thing, and so, but we'll, we'll look at, we're, we're opening slowly, we're bringing things back, and we'll, we can get back in there.
I appreciate Jane's question, but I also trust the leadership to make that decision. I'll meet wherever you tell me to.
Thank you.
And I was gonna just say that, you know, I, I trust all of you, and I know that you will be, take the vaccine, and you'll wear your mask when required, but I also need to take care of Brenda, and so my desire is, as long as we're accomplishing what we need to accomplish, we could meet outside, as far as I'm concerned. But this meets my needs to communicate with you, and so I'm okay in here, so I have no urgency to move, so I want you to consider the conservative side of it, too.
Thank you.
The other item that, not a recommended for topic discussion, but a recommendation to think, and that's our annual budget, I know now's the time of the year, you start working about those things, and if there's any requirements that any trustees have that you, you would like to present, I think you need to think that over, and if there's any budget requests that need to be put forward, if you're on any committees, or is any travel gonna be involved, or any, any, any of that kind of stuff for the next year, be sure you don't wait to the last minute to get that forward. Next item is number fifteen, and I spent time and location in the board workshop, scheduled for April twenty twenty-one, and the board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, and it will be in this room, in this building, on the proposed dates. Start time would be one P.M. No requirement for executive session today, and if there's no objections, we stand adjourned.